The legislature is back in session. Good morning, everyone. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Morning, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make this notwithstanding motion that we revert back to motions.
On that motion without any objections ordered.
And Madam Speaker, I'd like to recognize Speaker Pangolinan to make a motion.
Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we've had many discussions over the last several days about trying to find a way to continue to look for ways to save in this government. And I'd like to, in that spirit of trying to find opportunities for saving, provide an option to the body that it may wish to consider in the form of a motion. And on that motion is to, notwithstanding the governor's veto, that we place Bill 513 in the voting file for the purpose of an override.
On the motion, without any objections.
It's the, it's in your veto file, I guess, or it's the health insurance option, Madam Speaker.
513. So on the motion? No objections? It's ordered. Uh, down to the third. [inaudible]
Resolution number 198-31 LS, introduced by F. F. Blath Jr., M. Silva Tyron, T. Siada, and others, relative to requesting the Commander, U.S. Naval Base Guam, to change the name of U.S. Naval Station Guam to reflect the cultural history of Guam by renaming it as the Sumai U.S. Naval Base Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 322-31.
Bill number 322-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Attah, Chris M. Duñez, Argero Rispicio, an act amended sections 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of Taro for Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting certain government vehicles from local requirements.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 352-31.
Bill number 352-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Blath Jr., an act of his own law number 10060rem-4-1-1, in the municipality of Dededo, from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, R1, R2, to commercial zone, C.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 353-31.
Bill number 354-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Blath Jr., an act of his own law number 10060rem-3-1, in the municipality of Dededo, from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Mabini?
Yes.
Senator Munya Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker One-Pat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
Yes.
Does that excuse?
Senator for, for Senator Mabini?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to again renew my motion at the beginning of the session to excuse those senators who are not in session, and so I move that we excuse Senator Mabini from voting.
On that motion without any objections ordered. Resolution number 198-31, received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Resolution number 198-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 353-31.
Bill number 354-31, COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Blath Jr., an act of his own law number 10060rem-3-1, in the municipality of Dededo, from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Attah?
Aye.
Senator Tony Attah?
Yes.
Senator Blath?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 355-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 355-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 356-31.
Bill number 356-31 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Luth Jr. An act to resolve lot number 10060 REM 3-3, municipality of Dedado from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 356-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 356-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 357-31.
Bill number 357-31 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Luth Jr. An act to resolve lot number 10060 REM-2-2 new, municipality of Dedado from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 357-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 357 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 358-31.
Bill number 358-31 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Luth Jr. An act to resolve lot number 10060 REM 2-1-R2, municipality of Dedado from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 358-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 358-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 359-31.
Bill number 359-31 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Luth Jr. An act to resolve lot number 10060 REM-2-2-1-R1, municipality of Dedado from one family dwelling zone, multiple dwelling zone, to commercial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 359-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 359-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 473-31.
Bill number 473-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Utilities Transportation, Public Works, Veteran Affairs, and further substituted by the Committee on Rules and Amendment on the Floor. Introduced by T.C. Ada. An act amend section 6105B2 and 6202A1 of Article 2, Chapter 6 of Title 12 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the minimum qualifications of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Executive Manager Position and Modifications to Establish Routes, Schedule, Pairs, and Policies.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 473-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 473-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 511-31.
Bill number 511-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampad, E.D.D., B.J.F. Cruz. An act amend section 2950, repeal and reenact section 2951, amend sections 2952 through 2954, add a new section 2954A, and amend sections 2955 through 2960, all of chapter 2, Article 10, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the Audit Protective Services mandates.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill 511-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 511-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 534-31 LS.
Bill number 534-31 LS, as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by R. Zerospicio, T.C. Ada, B.J.F. Cruz. An act to resolve lot number 10063 REM, Portion 3, municipality of Dedado, containing an area of approximately 5,432 square meters from one family dwelling zone, R1 to commercial zone C.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Amended bill number 534-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Amended bill number 534-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 541-31.
Bill number 541-31 COR, introduced by R. Zerospicio, T.C. Ada, B.J.F. Cruz. An act to resolve lot number 10063 REM, Portion 1, municipality of Dedado, containing an area of approximately 5,432 square meters and bordered by Harmon Louvre Road.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan.
541.
Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 541-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number 541-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 529-31.
Bill number 529-31 COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Adolph B. Palacios, Sr. An act amend section 66104.2 of chapter 66, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the employment of civilian volunteer police reserve officers.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Amended bill number 529-31, receive 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Amended bill number 529-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 538-31.
Bill number 538-31 COR, as substituted by the author and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampad, E.D.D., R. Zerospicio. An act approve the terms and conditions of Guam Economic Development Authority Project Revenue Bonds to finance the Aaronwood Lada Senior Village Affordable Multi-Family Rental Housing Development, amend public law 30-172 relative to the Lada Estates Project Ensuring Development of Project for Affordable Housing for the people of Guam, and to amend public law 31-195 relative to affordable homes, and to authorize tax credit in lieu of payment for the off-site infrastructure work servicing the Lada Estates Affordable Housing Project.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Pangolinan.
Substitute bill number 538-31, receive 13 ye votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Substitute bill number 538-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 514-31.
Bill number 514-31 COR, introduced by B.C. Pangolinan, Judith T. Wampad, E.D.D., B.J.F. Cruz, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act amend item 2 and repeal item 3 of section 1512.3a 2b of Article 5, Chapter 1, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prioritizing the payment of income tax refunds with the remaining $18 million of Series B bond proceeds.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Duñez. Senator Silva Tyron. Senator Blas. Senator Blas.
Bill Number 514-31 received twelve yea votes, two nays, and one excused absence. Bill Number 514-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 442-31.
Bill Number 442-31 COR introduced by F.F. Blas Jr., M. Silva Tyron, Sam E. Mabini, Ph.D., V. Anthony Ada, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Chris M. Duñez. An act to develop an economic incentive program by establishing the Talafova River Walk Project to spur economic development and enhancement programs in Southern Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 442-31 received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill Number 442-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 494-31.
Bill Number 494-31 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., M. Silva Tyron, Sam Mabini, Ph.D. An act amend Section 3132 of Chapter 3, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adding veterans to the better customer service policy.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Respecho. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada.
Bill Number 494-31 received twelve yea votes, two nays, one excused absence. Bill Number 494-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 540-31.
Bill Number 540-31 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to add up and add the proposed fee schedule for the systems of care children's services to any existing Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Fee Schedule that has been established.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 540-31 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 540-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 237-31.
Bill Number 237-31 COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new section seventy point forty-four point three to Article 1 of Chapter Seventy of Title 9, Guam Code Annotated, relative to blacklisting.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Amendment Bill Number 234-31, 237-31 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Amendment Bill Number 237-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 417-31.
Bill Number 417-31 COR introduced by Adofobi Palacios Senior, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to add a new subsection M to Section 41103 of Article 1, Chapter 41 of Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a certification program for government of Guam employees and the provision of services to individuals with disabilities.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 417-31 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 413-31 is duly passed by this body.
Bill Number 503-31 COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Adofobi Palacios Senior. An act to add a new section 34105.2 to Chapter 34 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the termination of child support.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Amendment Bill Number 503-31 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Amendment Bill Number 503-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 505-31.
Bill Number 505-31 COR is substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to establish the administrative rules and regulations governing the Guam Prescription Drug Monitoring Program of the Department of Public Health and Social Services under new Article 18 of Chapter 4, Division 1, Title 26, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, and in conformance with Section 67.0301A of Article 3, Regulation and Control the Manufacturer-Distribution and Dispensing of Controlled Substances, Chapter 67, Title 9, Guam Code Annotated.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Substitute Bill Number 505 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 505 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 535-31.
Bill Number 535-31 COR introduced by B.C. Pangolinan, Judith P. Guthert, DPA, Judith T. Wampad EDD. An act to repeal and reenact Section 18 of Public Law 31-229 to authorize the University of Guam to pledge certain revenues and enter into installment purchase and sale agreements for the purpose of refinancing the Asus and Eugenia Leon Guerrero School of Business and Public Administration Building.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 535-31 received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 535 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 510-31.
Bill Number 510-31 COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith P. Guthert, DPA, Judith T. Wampad EDD, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to add a new section 8 to Chapter 8 of Public Law 31-233 relative to the continuing appropriations for the Mayor's Council of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthert.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One Pat.
Again.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill Number 510-31 received thirteen yea votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Bill Number 510-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 524.
Bill Number 524-31 COR is substituted by the author and amended on the floor. Introduced by J.T. Wampad EDD, T.R. Munya Barnes, Sam E. Mabini, Ph.D., Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., B.C. Pangolinan, Judith P. Guthert, DPA. An act amends of Sections A and B of Section 1512.3 and to add a new sub-paragraph 3 to Sections 15, 12.3J, all of Article 5, Chapter 1 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the issuance of bonds and other obligations of the government of Guam for the sole purpose of refunding prior bonds and other obligations. of the Government of Guam for the sole purpose of refunding prior bonds and other obligations to achieve debt service savings.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One, Pat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Blas.
Substitute Bill Number 524, received thirteen yea votes, one nay, one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 524 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 532-31.
Bill Number 532-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Senior Citizens, Economic Development, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthardts, D.P.A., and act to add new Sections 16201.1, 16201.2, 16201.3, 16215, 16216, 16217, 16218, 16219, 16220, 16221, and 16222, and to amend Sections 16203, 16205, and 16206, all of Article 2 of Chapter 16, Title 3, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the presentation of initiative measures and to be known as the Initiative Reform and Transparency Act of 2012.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez. Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One, Pat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Blas. Senator Duñez. Senator Silva Tyron. Senator Blas. Senator Duñez.
Substitute Bill Number 532, received eleven yea votes, three nays, and one excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 532 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 519.
Bill Number 519-31 COR, as substituted by the author and amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampad, E.D.D., V.J.F. Cruz, an act to authorize the Guam Visitors Bureau to recruit and recruit the necessary personnel to support its mission and to authorize an appropriation for the purpose of such recruitment and to appropriate the sum of $60,000 from the Tourist Attraction Fund to the University of Guam to fund programs for the Guam PDA Foundation.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez. Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One, Pat. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron. Senator Blas.
Bill Number 502-31, as amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Rispicio, T.C. Ada, Adolf B. Palacios Senior, Judith P. Guthardts, D.P.A., T.R. Munya Barnes, an act to appropriate $500,000 from the Tourist Attraction Fund for the operations of the Tuamon Precinct and to fund new police positions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One, Pat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Blas. Senator Pangolinan.
Notwithstanding the objections on the matter of Veto Bill 513.
Bill Number 507-31 LS, as amended by the Committee and further amended on the floor. As amended by the Committee of the whole and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micrionation Affairs, and Human and Natural Resources at the request of Maga Lai in Guam, an act to amend Sections 4119 and to repeal Sections 4110.1, all of Chapter 4 of Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to personnel policy, and to add a new section 4 to Public Law 31-154, relative to budgetary savings to reduce the general fund deficit, and to repeal and reenact Chapter 12 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to Comrite 21.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Most of Chris has again.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker One, Pat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rodriguez. Speaker One, Pat.
I'm good. Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Amended Bill Number 507, received nine yea votes, five nays, and one excused absence. Amended Bill Number 507-31 is duly passed by this body. So notwithstanding the objections on the matter of Veto Bill 513. Ask the clerk to please read the title.
Veto Bill Number 513-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by V.C. Pangolinan, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., J.T. Wampad, E.D.D., and others, an act to provide health insurance to government of Guam employees and retirees for fiscal year 2013.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Aye.
Senator Guthardts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini. Senator Munya Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker One, Pat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes.
Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor's veto on Bill 513, whether it should be overridden, the votes are seven yays, seven nays, and one excused absence. Veto Bill 513 failed to get the required number of votes to be overridden. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
Thank you very much on that motion. Without any objections, we are adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.